Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting. We had a couple of different topics of discussion, one involving rural waterfront lands and the other public parking supply. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Allen. That council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. Next, we have the approval of the added's. We just have a couple of additional communication items. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Ossanik. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential bikinery interest? Seeing none, we have no presentations tonight, we have no delegations, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none. We do have a motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Bohm, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Ron Lambert, Facility Supervisor, on the passing of his mother, Amy Lambert, on February the 14th, 2016. Our thoughts are with Ron and his family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote. And that carries. We do have one deferred motion, moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Allen. Whereas Tamarack Rito Corporation applied for a zoning bylaw amendment with respect to the property located at 1200 Highway 15 for the purpose of developing a commercial plaza, and whereas concern was expressed by residents at a town hall meeting held for the Pittsburgh District residents regarding numerous site plan issues that may impact residential neighbours such as traffic, parking, landscaping along Highway 15, and whereas the delegation of authority bylaw 2006-75 allows for council to bump up site plan control applications to planning committee, and whereas a bump up to planning committee will provide transparency and allow the details of the project to be reviewed and approved by the planning committee, therefore be it resolved that the site plan control application for a commercial plaza located at 1200 Highway 15 to be submitted by Tamarack Rito Corporation be bumped up to the planning committee. Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. The motion pretty much speaks for itself. The main idea here is essentially that at a district meeting that I recently held, there was quite a bit of concern raised about the future look and feel of Highway 15. So with that in mind, everybody's excited about the plaza. They definitely want it, we know that. This simply allows for more public input and more feedback on the look and feel, and it goes hand in hand with the extra money that was awarded to the environmental assessment. It's, Highway 15's the heritage route coming into the city, there's been some wooden fences that have gone up, and essentially people want to maintain that look and feel. So it goes hand in hand with that, and I just ask everybody to support it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 32 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by deputy mayor Turner. That report number 32 from the Chief Minister of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are items A through E. Would anyone like any separations? Councillor Neil? So item C has been separated. Seeing no other separations, we will vote on the balance. Item A is receipt of the 2015 Water System Annual Compliance Reports. Item B, approval of two initial study grant applications, Brownfields Project Area 1A for the properties located at 51 to 57 Queen Street and 18 Queen 282 Ontario Street. Item D, award of contract for professional consulting services for the construction phase of the Hanson Memorial Parking Garage rehabilitation. Item E, Queen's University Medical and University Parking Zone changes to on-street parking management. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Item C is consent to amend authority for agreements related to Brownfield CIP benefits for 663 Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Thank you very much. I'm asked that this be separated because I know it looks like a straightforward housekeeping issue because of a change in ownership and a Brownfield agreement. And so I support the intent of this. I guess my concern was, I'm not sure when the rebates get triggered. I had thought it was on completion, full completion of a development. And this particular development at 663 Princess Street, and I checked with our Director of Planning today, the provisions of the site plan agreement have not been met. And so I'm just concerned that we may be rebating monies that he may or may not be entitled to until completion of site plan. And it was my understanding that site plan agreement said it was to be completed 60 or 90 days after occupancy, and that date has come and gone. So if either our Commissioner of Planning or Commissioner Beech can speak to that, just to clarify.
Commissioner Beech?
So to clarify, in terms of the assignment, so it's just changing the company that this agreement is assigned to, so there are a number of clauses within the agreement that require the developer to complete certain things before there is payment for. They can qualify for the tax incremental financing, but they don't actually have that rebated until there's a number of requirements met. So one of the requirements is that they meet the redevelopment requirements, that they're in compliance with the Ontario Building Code, and that those approvals are in place, in addition to some others with respect to construction liens and other things. But those, they will not actually get paid until the planning approvals are complete.
I'll sleep much better tonight, thank you very much.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 33 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Ossanik. That report number 33 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer recommend be received and adopted.
So there is just the one item, Heritage Kingston Transition Team Report. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. So I just have, I do have an amendment prepared, which I have discussed already with Commissioner Hurdle. It's minor, but it's very important. The clerk has the amendment, and I'll get right to it. I'm essentially agreeing with the recommendations, but with this one minor change, which will give the nominations team a little bit of extra direction to ensure that the committee, the newly formed committee will be, will function as intended. As you know, it says in the report that we had five meetings of the transition team, which comprised myself, councillor Shell, and two members of staff, and two members of the public, that were both members of the previous two committees that were to be essentially merged by this initiative. And so the amendment is what's in bold here. So to add the word required after those four bullets, and that's it. So I would speak to the rationale once it's seconded, I suppose.
Okay, do, so I'll just give everyone a second to read that. So essentially, councillor Stroud, you've got an amendment to add that, those additional points?
Just the word required is what's added. The bullets are as stated in the report, under schedule B4. The only thing that's different is the word required in brackets after four of the bullets.
Okay. So all we're doing is adding required after several of those points.
And it's seconded by councillor Shell.
Okay, so it's seconded by councillor Shell. So councillor Stroud, you have the floor, if there's anything else that you wish to say to the amendment?
Yeah, I was just gonna put it in context for everyone. So the current Heritage Committee has 12 members. This report recommends one fewer member. That was agreed to by the transition team. The meetings already go the full four-hour allotment almost every time, and that is with it the old mandate, which really is just looking at heritage matters. The new mandate includes all of the museums business as well. So you can imagine, we need to find ways to deal with this amount of information that will be efficient. One way to do this that I believe is crucial, and the reason for the amendment, is by making sure that those four fields of expertise or knowledge are absolutely represented on the committee. So there will be nine committee members other than two councillors. So two of us will sit on the new committee, same as before. Instead of 10 members, nine. And of those nine members, with this amendment, four would have to have those four qualifications. So similar to a job application where you say must be a member of the College of Nurses if it's a nursing position, that's a requirement. And then be in good physical condition is sort of another suggested thing that isn't a requirement, but is recommended. So all of these things are recommended. We're highlighting four that we can't live without, and I'll give the reason for that is cultural heritage has been added in the past, but it hasn't been successfully integrated into the committee's working. And it is the will of the transition team that it be given prominence, so it's absolutely crucial that cultural heritage be in there. Someone on the committee needs to have those listed qualifications. Architecture history as well, because so much of the business of the committee is dealing with architecture and built heritage. Third bullet, same thing, except that one's also important because it talks about the trades. So if you are a builder, if you have done alterations on a heritage building, and you sit on the committee, as two of our current members do, they are very important to the committee, and I feel as Chair I could not live without their advice. Same thing for the fifth bullet, because we're merging the museums committee into the new committee, we need someone with experience with museums, as it states there. The other four things that which were suggested by staff are all, would be great to have on the committee as well, but the reality is with nine spots, if one of those doesn't make it at any given time, we can get that information from staff. So for example, the fourth bullet, which is very important, planning policies and familiarity with the Ontario Heritage Act, that actually is covered by staff currently, and should be in the future. It would be nice to have it on the committee as well, but if it's not, we can look to staff for that. And the same for the last three. We have a communications department, we have city staff that know effective marketing strategies, and cultural tourism is also an important piece, be nice to have on the committee. Any one of those, if it's not in the qualifications, it shouldn't be a deal breaker, but in my, the purpose of this amendment, in my opinion, and I hope you support me, the four that are bolded are absolutely crucial to the working of the new committee, which is going to have a tough time fulfilling its mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? To the amendment only. Councillor Neil?
Yes. I just heard, I believe, an answer to my question, but I just want to clarify. When I first read this, it sounded, when you say Heritage Kingston's membership should possess, you're talking about individuals representing that skill set, not in its entirety, but individually having representatives on it. And when I first read that, and maybe I'm misreading it, it almost suggests that we're looking for a Renaissance man or woman who has this array of diverse skills. So it's, you just want those represented on the committee. Is there a way to word that?
So just to be clear, councillor Neil, the amendment here is only to add in the word required, those four times. So the rest of that wording is already there in the recommendation, that's not part of the amendment?
It's just when I read Heritage Kingston's membership should possess a diversity of skills.
So the amendment is only to add that word required?
Okay. I can support it, I was just a little confused that.
Thank you.
It sounds like all members should have that, these skill sets.
Councillor Hutchison? Only to the amendment, so only on the words required, on those points?
Well, I'll try. The, there's, okay. I'm concerned with the phenomenon that happens at nominations, my own the Chair nominations have been on it for years. The phenomenon where no one applies, that meets, that all of the things that a committee would like to see, and so you fill as best you can, or you, sometimes we go out and apply again, ask them to apply again. So, to me, and I'm willing to have the Chair answer this question, okay? I just want to know how we're supposed to be thinking about this, because that's four of nine, so you've just got quorum if you can't fill any of these, okay? So it seems to me when it says should possess these skills, which is good, and I agree with that, and I agree with all the provisions, it probably should say recommended rather than required. Because when you say should, you've got an opening there where you don't have to do it. And that, when you're on nominations, is a big necessity sometimes. So I'm just not sure how this is gonna work if we can't find all the people that, if you take it as a strict requirement, which I'm not even sure you can if you take the should possess into account. So I don't know what the Chair would say to this.
So I don't think that that's something that staff can answer, I think that that is absolutely a reasonable argument to put forward when we're debating this amendment, and ultimately if this amendment passes, then that's something that the nominations committee is going to have to grapple with if they're put in that position. And so then I would imagine that that would be a matter of determination and an interpretation at that point. So I think it's a valid point, but I don't, it's not something that I can rule out of order, I think it's just a point that we need to consider in the debate.
May I ask the clerk, who has lots of experience in this, how they would see this perhaps working?
Mr. Clerk?
And I'm not trying to be pedantic about this, because at some point, we'd have to make it work.
Mr. Clerk, do you have a comment on this amendment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There are a number of options that staff could utilise in conjunction with the nominations committee. We could go back out and look for those particular skill sets through additional advertising, alternatively based on the number of applications, and we do have a significant number of applications for this group. You would try to find that which most reflected that which we're looking for. But we're not adverse to having to go back out and re-advertise for some of those positions, should the nominations committee feel that way.
Councillor Hutchison, do you have anything else that you want to say?
I would suggest that as a, an amendment to the amendment, that I will move that instead of required be struck and highly recommended be inserted.
Mr. Clerk, can I see for a moment? Okay, so that is, that is not an amendment to the amendment, that's contrary to the amendment. So if you would prefer different wording, then you can vote against this amendment, and then you can propose something else in its place, but we can't amend it that way.
Because of what I said earlier?
Because the amendment, the amendment is, the amendment to the amendment is contrary to the amendment. So you can't, you can't adopt an amendment that is contrary to the intent of the original amendment.
Because you're replacing a strict condition with a variable condition.
So if you don't like that wording, you can vote against this amendment, and then we can propose a new amendment if you or somebody else chooses.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna vote for this, even though I'm sceptical about how it will actually work in practice. We've done the things that the clerk said, and it still hasn't worked in some cases, so, but, you know, I'm open to finding out if it's gonna work. And I understand why you say it's against, it's, okay.
Thank you. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, and through you. I too share the reservations that councillor Hutchison has, having sat on the nominations committee for the past year. And the two questions I have, and this is maybe for the mover of the amendment to think about, is how, or for the nominations committee to consider, or for us to consider our whole approach to nominations in general because of this, but how do we know in the future who's already on the committee that has these skills? We don't see the resumes, or who has been selected to fill that role, or if the Renaissance man or woman has filled all four of those on there. So we need to make sure we have that process. So I can still support the intent of this, having asked that question. The other question is, we've already received the submissions for this, as the clerk has indicated, a lot of them. We haven't, and I was gonna ask this question outside of the amendment, because it applies to the whole thing as well as to this amendment, but how did people know to apply for this when we haven't shared the criteria that we're looking for yet? And so that's my concern, and that's, I'm gonna vote against this, I guess, there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Yes, councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I understand the intent of this. I guess my concern is with the words required, and the fact that somebody looking at the required clauses, you could have a person that's really knowledgeable, but just looks at those required clauses and thinks, I'm not even gonna apply because I don't meet enough of those or any of those. So in my mind, having the required could possibly limit the amount of people in the future that would actually have a great interest in a lot to offer, but they're just not gonna apply because they feel they don't have enough of the required elements. So for that reason, although I understand the intent of it, I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing, yes, deputy mayor Turner?
Thank you, and through you. I agree with deputy, or councillor Bohm, sorry about that, that was last month. And I think it's important that we don't restrict anybody, and I understand the premise that councillor Stroud is stating, but I think it's important that maybe we just tweak it a little bit and say highly required instead of required, because we could exclude really good candidates from this. Thank you.
Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I am in favour of this. Because we are creating a new committee that is rather unusual, we are bringing together some very important aspects of the City of Kingston as a whole, culturally, heritage-wise and built heritage-wise, that we've never done before. And I almost think of it as a bit of a KEIF-type committee now, that we are morphing into. There will be a lot of learning experiences going on with everybody in the committee as we learn about each other's roles. As I'm on the Museums and Collections Committee and knew nothing about museums and collections, it has been a complete learning experience because there are retired professionals on that committee who know what they're talking about and make perfect sense to me, which is fortunate. So when we discussed after the beginning of the meetings about the transition, this came up. We can't survive without people who don't truly understand how to build a heritage building, and that's mostly people who've worked on them. So we do need at least one. We need somebody who really understands the history of Kingston, its cultural heritage, and has done historical research, and there are many in the City of Kingston, especially because we have Queens. The architectural history, when you have those discussions, is it Edwardian, is it Queen Mary, is it, you know, which architect did it, which architect changed it, why is that heritage attribute important, which period should we be discussing the heritage attribute around? We need somebody who knows what you're talking about, or we just go in circles. And then the museum policy, we have to have someone with a professional background in that to keep up our grant ability with the City of Kingston, because as the owners of professional museums, we have to be professional in the way we treat it as a committee. So it is an advisory committee, but it has big jobs to do. And I do think that we've had the people on the committee, I don't think it's gonna be hard to find them actually. I bet you they've already applied, because we have so many people with an incredible amount of ability and knowledge in the city, who have already been there. It's just, we're trying to really focus so that we really get the work done in an integrated fashion this time, and it is going to be why it talks about, we're going to have an introductory phase of learning how to be on the committee, learning to create this new committee. So I'm quite content that one person might fit all the required. I mean, it's that, there are some people in the city that have such an incredible amount of knowledge that it may be two people that we get the four requirements from. So I'm quite happy to support this and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud, you have the last word.
Yeah, just gonna say, I neglected to mention, and I should have, that this specific required language that's in the amendment is a result of a great conversation I had today with Commissioner Hurdle. She hasn't spoken yet on this, because no one's answered a question, so I might do that at this point. And so the clerk has already answered what would happen if we were in the undesirable position of not having people to fill those four required spots. In other words, the tire hands, and that put us in an awkward spot. Clerk answered that. If maybe Commissioner Hurdle could elaborate on that, and also the reasoning behind not maybe needing the word required behind the others. Because all this really is, is having four required attributes and four recommended attributes. And if she could just sort of explain further from staff's point of view, how we came to have this amendment before us today. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, obviously, all of the eight bullets that are listed there were part of the schedule. So the four bullets that have the word required are not new, they were always part of the language and the expectation in terms of skills and abilities. And I think what came out clearly in the conversation this afternoon with councillor Stroud was that there is a sense that these four elements were more of a priority in terms of skills that we should have on the committee. So speaking for the heritage, the existing municipal heritage committee, we do currently have members that have the expertise that we are looking for. I'm not gonna say everything that's listed there, but the elements that are more in line with built heritage. So obviously, these would not be required of all individuals that would be on the committee, but they would be required, we would be required to have that expertise at the table. So I think with the nominations process and the ability to go back out to the public, should we not be able to recruit the first time around that particular skill, which in some cases we already have on our committees, I think that's something that could be feasible.
Thank you for your indulgence, your worship. So just in deciding your vote, it's the, without the word required, the recommendation contains all of that language with just four words less, and it does not have the higher, the highlight, basically a highlighter on those four requirements for the nominations committee, and therefore it's more of a random assortment of those eight bullets that you would get. With only nine members, you might get all of them covered anyways, but you might not with the word required, and you're more likely to get them. It's not an exact science, of course. You know, I'm asking for council support to give just a little bit of extra direction to the nominations committee, not necessarily this nomination committee. We're talking also to the nominations committee 10 years from now, unless this is further amended, 20 years from now, et cetera, et cetera. And if we want this committee to be functional, I think this is the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion to amend. Please vote. Please vote. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so we're just having a couple of technical difficulties with the voting system. So if we can get everybody to sign in one more time, we're going to try it one more time electronically. Otherwise, we'll vote the old-fashioned way. Okay, please vote. And that loses 6-6, loses on a tie. So on the recommendation then as not amended. Counselor Bohm?
Yes, your worship. I was wondering if I could make an amendment to that to essentially, this might not be the right time, to essentially replace the word "required" from the previous one with "make a priority". And I have that written down.
Okay, so there's not, that is in order. The amendment to add the word "required" has failed. So now we are back to the original wording. So if there is a seconder, seconded by Counselor McLaren. So essentially now we have, and I think we're okay not having that up on the screen, everyone understands that. Counselor Bohm, if you can just provide that and write into the clerk.
Yes, your worship.
So essentially now.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, Counselor Bohm, the recommendation says "make a priority" in those four same locations as when we saw with the word "required"?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, so it's been duly moved and seconded. Any comment or discussion on the amendment? Counselor Holland.
Right, sorry. No, it's, sorry, this is more a grammatical suggestion. I think prioritize is better than make a priority.
Would someone like to propose a friendly amendment that provides better grammar than make a priority?
Originally, I had prioritize. It's.
So can we just accept that instead of make a priority, we'll say prioritized? Okay, any comment on the motion to amend to add the word "prioritized" in italics after those four skills? Counselor Stroud.
I thank Counselor Bohm for this suggestion. I'm happy to support this different wording that achieves the same result. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on this motion to amend. And that carries unanimously. On the motion as amended, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 34 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. I rise now to report, to present report number 34 from the EITP Committee, moved and seconded, and ask that council receive and adopt it.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Allen. That report number 34 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted. So there are two items. Item number one is the Kingston Climate Action Plan Implementation Update. And item two is resignation of members of council from the committee. Counselor Allen, so, okay, you want to speak to item number two? Okay, so let's just take the vote then on item one first. Please vote. And that carries. So item number two, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. And just through you quickly, we, through the process that we went through last year with KEIF strategic planning, as well as the committee review, we simply determined that we had enough counselors, more than enough counselors on that committee, and we had a very agreeable discussion where we would reduce it to two representatives on the committee. So we're not, there's nobody that needs to be replaced, and there was no fight. Counselor Stroud and I simply have enough on our plate as it is. So we step back and we think that Counselors Niels and McLaren will do a great job on that committee. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Counselor Neil.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank both the counselors for willingly sacrificing themselves from this committee. I will point out that there are working committees that I know Counselor Allen has been very involved in, and any member of council can come to any working group or to KEIF as an ex officio non-voting member. And so I encourage you all to check out the agendas and come if there's an issue that strikes your fancy. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole tonight. We have one information report, age-friendly Kingston 2015 Year in Status Report. Seeing no questions, yes, Counselor Holland.
I guess just first to extend thanks to staff for this report. It's, there's a lot of wisdom that we can gain from this in moving forward. I had just one quick little question, though, just to have a bit more explanation on the human library. I'm a bit familiar with that, but there's one, one of the action items in here refers to the Human Library Program in Ottawa and Hamilton. It's very interesting. I was just wondering if staff could provide a bit of information on that.
Who would like to take that? Ms. Hitchens?
Through, thank you, through you, your worship. The Human Library event, we actually met this morning, so you're well timed with your question. We met this morning with the library around the potential of doing an event here. I think the group collectively felt that in lieu of doing an event, which takes a tremendous amount of work to do an event, you basically bring in, in most cases, older adults from the community, and people borrow them for 15 minutes and interview them, and then give them back, and someone else can borrow them. They have a project that they're going to expand upon that does interviews with people and records the interviews. It's not as interactive, but it's certainly along the same vein. And the response has been quite good because it's not a one-day event. You can look at them on your own time and listen to them, so I think we're going to expand that. It's along the same, has the same purpose, but I think that's the way we're going to go.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just, I have a brief question for engineering, and they may be able to help me with this. In the age-friendly report, it talks about how the new bylaws will allow us to install legal crosswalks at locations where we have courtesy crossings, and I think that's fantastic. Do we have timelines on when we might be able to start doing that?
Is there anyone from staff that wants, that can take that? Mr. Keefe?
Yeah, through you, your worship. I currently can't provide them, but what I would suggest, we will provide that information, a council update, in the near future.
Great. It's just something that I've heard constant criticism about, and it would be really great once we can implement those proper crosswalks. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So there are no information reports from members of council. We have no miscellaneous business, so on to new motions. I'll just note that motion number one is moved by Counselor George, and I know that this is very much connected to his work on the AMO Board. So he has asked if we would consider deferring this motion to the next meeting so that he can speak to the background for it. Can I have a motion to defer, please? Moved by Counselor Neil, seconded by Counselor Holland. Please vote. And that carries. New motion number two, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Neil. The council waived the rental fees of $1,194 for the use of Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Sail Room on Saturday, April 23, 2016, for the spring fundraiser craft sale with proceeds to Partners and Mission Food Bank, and that this be funded from the Working Fund Reserve. Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, again, I think this motion is pretty self-explanatory. Happy to move this, and one of the reasons is this past holiday season, I was having a conversation with my four-year-old, and she asked what community was and kind of how that works, which is a pretty big question for a four-year-old. So I started explaining to her, and essentially, next thing you know, I'm in my vehicle, and we're going to the store to buy a cart full of food to donate to the food bank. And that was what she wanted to do for Christmas. So that's what she said she wanted for Christmas. So just essentially, this is, you know, a way to build community, and this is a time of year that's known for problems with, you know, shortages in the food bank and the vulnerable people out there who may not have enough to eat. So essentially, I hope that everybody would support this motion, and that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neil.
Yes, I supported this motion and seconded it. Typically, I always have some reservations about waiving fees because we have certain mechanisms for doing that. But this is a really, really important organization in the city. And April 23 would have been, as they say in theater, a dark day in the sailroom anyway. So I think it's a perfect opportunity for the city to do this. But I would appreciate if people don't reference this as a precedent for future waiving of fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Just briefly, I'm happy to support this as well because one of our priorities is homelessness and food security, and this hits the nail on the head. And so we're directing our support towards one of our stated council priorities. So I see no issue with supporting this.
Deputy Mayor Turner, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and recognize you.
This is a very challenging motion for me. I have absolutely nothing but good to say for the Partners and Mission Food Bank. There's absolutely no doubt that they do tremendous work for our community. There's also no doubt that food security and homelessness is absolutely a priority for council. The problem that I have is that there are a lot of other great organizations that do similar work that may run into these situations. And my concern is, are we creating a double standard? Is it fair for us to grant this waiver of fees and then expect other similar groups to have to pay? In my view, if we're going to have a broader discussion about this, then we should be including all groups. And that might have big financial implications for us. But there is an issue of fairness here. This is really difficult for me to raise this, but I think it needs to be raised. That I don't want some of the other great organizations in the city saying, "Well, now, hold on. You've given them a break on their fundraiser. Well, I've got a fundraiser. Well, I've got a fundraiser." My office gets requests for this all the time. And we always say the same thing. We say, "You know what? We have to have a level playing field." At the end of the day, we want to support you. We want to help you. If there's in-kind stuff we can do, then that's fine. But at the end of the day, it's paramount, I believe, that we treat everybody fairly. So for that reason, I don't believe that I can support this. And again, not because of this organization and the great stuff that it does, but just what kind of precedent are we setting, and how do we say no to the next group that comes forward? Thank you.
I return the chair.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. While I recognize the need to have a broader discussion, I'm, I think there is a distinction here in that the event is not actually being organized by the food bank. And they receive, while, you know, there's endless support that should be directed towards the food bank, they do, are also a united way. They receive a lot of funding underneath umbrella groups. The group that's organizing this is a very small group. It's actually a community member who is making this sort of initiative and beginning the process of having future fundraisers. I think we need to show support for individuals who are bringing forward ideas like this, not to benefit themselves, but to benefit another organization, just as we have done in the past for hockey events. Because we see that the initiative is based not on anything to gain for this group other than to bring in some funds to support another group. So for that reason, and for other reasons, I will be supporting it. And I do look forward to having more clarity in the future. But for this one, I think it's just an important distinction to make. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Can I ask staff a question if there's other places we could use? Because I agree with you that it is difficult to set a precedent, even though it is such a good cause. But is there other places or rental places that this group could use that would be less cost or maybe no cost?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing that I want to make sure is clear is that we have fees that are attached to all recreational facilities. So even if this group was to say, for example, that they wanted to have this event at Meeting Room in one of the arenas, there would still be rental fees that are related to that, and that's set in the Fees and Charges Bylaw. So from a staff perspective, we do not have the ability to either reduce or waive that fee. So as far as other facilities that are not city-owned churches or other things like that, I mean, possibly that they could look into that. I'm not sure if they have or not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I can remember when I was first a counselor and first time I got asked something like this, I felt horrible because I knew that it wasn't a recommended practice for that very reason. One can lead to another to another. And I must admit, I don't actually have very much information about this proposal, but it is. information about this proposal, but it is one where we're being asked to open up a city building. There will be the heat and the janitor, and we will be putting money out. So we would be waiving, it would be a cost, non-tax revenue would normally be coming in for something like this, and I do know there are many churches and church halls, so again, I don't, I don't really have a lot of information about this, but I, as I say, I do remember how awful I felt when I had to say, "I'm sorry, that isn't our policy." So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Actually, Counsel Bohm, you have the last word if you want to say it.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I think the main thing that I was focusing on here was the proceeds from the event going to the Partners in Mission Food Bank, and that was kind of what resonated with me the most, and it was like, in my mind, I related it to the hockey tournament where, again, the proceeds kind of go back into things that support the city, so that was essentially where I was coming from with that. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of seven to five. Okay, on to new motion number three, moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel McLaren. Whereas City Council has identified open government and transparency as council priorities, and whereas the Planning Act identifies that procedural fairness as a fundamental concern, section 61, and whereas the Coalition of Kingston Communities identifies a need for procedures that ensure compliance with the Planning Act, manifest procedural fairness, and include enhanced engagement opportunities, and whereas best practices in Ontario municipalities include an initial public meeting and a final statutory public meeting at the time of the comprehensive report and proposed draft bylaw, therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston review best practices in other municipalities and that the city adopts a procedure for zoning bylaw amendments and for official plan amendments that includes both an introductory public meeting and a public meeting at the time of a staff recommendation of the enabling draft bylaw, and that this process be reflected in the new official plan. Counsel Neil.
Yes, I won't repeat the whereas clauses other than to say that we have identified as a council priority both transparency and open government, and there has been in the past some frustrations in the community about the length of time between what the city calls our statutory public meeting, which is at the very, very beginning of the process, and it may be months that go by before the recommendation comes back to planning, and the draft bylaw, the bylaw goes to council, and in those many months, changes can happen that aren't considered substantial enough by staff to call upon another public meeting. And so we end up with a case of months, sometimes years. I want to point out that we had a recommendation withdrawn for a technical reason for the North End Walmart that was on our last planning one, so this is February 2016, and it actually, the public statutory meeting for that, I had to call to find out because I didn't even remember it, took place in September of 2013. And I believe that Counsel Shell and Counsel O'Sannick had just been appointed to the Planning Committee at that time, and the mayor was on the Planning Committee at that time, but nobody else would have in our collective memory information or remember that public meeting or the input from the public. When I've, when I called around to a variety of municipalities, Ottawa, going online for Toronto, Hamilton, London, Waterloo, Guelph, they all seem to have, at the culminating recommendation time, a, a public meeting, which is, I believe, what the Planning Act recommends. And so this motion attempts to address that. I will, I would like to say that Counsel Allen contacted me the day that I put this in, so I jumped the queue a little bit. I wasn't aware that he was working on a motion that indeed had the same intent as my motion. So we had an opportunity over coffee to talk a little bit, and I believe he has an amendment that I'm quite comfortable supporting. My resolve clause is very, very specific. His resolve clause, I believe, will, will reach the same, has the same intent, and I don't know if its great minds think a lot alike or fools seldom differ, but we were working towards the same end with two, two motions, so I'm happy to support the amendment, which I think will follow as soon as I shut up. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, Counsel Allen, you're next on my list.
Thank you, your worship, and I do have an amendment to put up on the screen, and it's, it's replacing the entire resolve clause. As we discussed, it is a broader resolve clause, but it achieves what Counsel Neil was looking for, and I think a little bit more, and gives staff room to bring perhaps other best practices forward besides just the public meeting process that he was seeking. And so what I'm looking forward is improving in general our community consultation practice in the planning process and giving staff the ability, the direction to review that and come back to us with best practices, and to maybe use a public meeting process to make sure we know what we're going out to look for by asking the public and talking to them, and telling them what we've got and listening to their opinions about it before council considers and receives those adaptations. So I hope that council will support this amendment. I believe my seconder is Mayor Patterson on this, so if anyone has any questions about this, I'm happy to debate that.
Thank you. So just for clarity then, that this motion to amend essentially is replacing the resolve clause from the original motion, and so it says, "Therefore be it resolved that staff review the community consultation practice associated with development applications in order to achieve an approach that ensures the voice of the community and is considered by council in its planned decisions, and that this review process include other municipal best practices, start with a public consultation meeting, and also finish with a public meeting to enable citizen review of proposed policies or bylaws before council adoption of recommendations." So the motion has been moved and seconded by myself. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss? Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. Just looking at the difference between this one and the other one, this one actually has a little bit less, and if it would please, your worship, could I add the missing part, or would you prefer that we add it later?
So you have a motion to amend this amendment?
The original motion has the last clause in it that says that it be reflected in the new official plan. It's not in this, so if it be pleasing to you, I would like to actually add that, or if it be pleasing to you to do it after it gets passed, because there is something that's missing here and that's, that we put it into the official plan, because both the Planning Act and the provincial policy statement say that the official plan is where this kind of stuff goes in.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment?
Okay, so Counsel McLaren, I think that the procedurally correct way to do that would be to put forward a motion to amend the amendment. So if you want to provide that wording to the clerk, and if you can just describe for us perhaps verbally so we understand, I think it's just adding, is it just adding wording at the end of this second resolve clause? Do you have that wording?
I do. I've given it to the clerk. I have it here if you would like, and the essence is to keep the intent of the first one in its entirety while maintaining the greater, the greater broadness that Counselor Allen brought in, but not eliminating a portion of the original intent. And do you want me to speak to reasoning for it?
So first of all, is there a seconder to your motion? Seconded by Counsel O'Sannick. Okay, so this is just on the motion to amend the amendment, in this case, only adding the words that this process be reflected in the new official plan. Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. So the original purpose of this was to get as much clarity on the issue as possible. So when we find what the best practices are, and what we suggest here, of course, is to, that there'll be two meetings, that it be put into the official plan, and there's an entire section in the official plan, section nine, called Administration and Implementation, and there's several places that it could go, and I think staff is probably best suited to decide where and when exactly in that section it should be. But the original intent of the original motion, in addition to everything that Counselor Allen had, was that it be put into our, into the text of the official plan, and that was missing. That's why it should be added, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. So the concern that I have with this motion to amend is that we're already jumping to the conclusion of the process of determining best practices in other municipalities. So it could very well be that when we look at other municipalities and we look at best practices when it comes to public consultation and the positioning of public meetings and other opportunities, that could very well lead us to say you want to make sure that you put, put this language in your procedural bylaw and you put this language over here and you put this language over here, but we're prejudging and presupposing what that best practice will be. So I think that this is premature. It could very well be that that's not the best place to put that wording, that it's not effective in the official plan, it should just go in the procedural bylaw or something else. Maybe not, but unless we already know that answer, and if we do know that answer, then why are we going through the whole process of doing best practices if we're already saying, "Well, we know what the best practice is"? So in my view, I think that the better option is to say no to this, let the best practice process go forward, let's see what other municipalities do, and then when staff report back to us, then we can make a judgment and determination at that point. So for that reason, I can't support this motion to amend. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Sorry, point of order. Was that the whole thing, or are you saying just the last part? Are you, because it's unclear what you meant, the motion to amend, the last amendment?
So I was speaking to the motion to amend the amendment. I've seconded the amendment itself. Okay, next on my list was, boy, I've lost track. There were hands everywhere. Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Actually, you, yours was better. I was going to say it, the intent, I believe, is that the results of this process be reflected in the new official plan, but I'm content with what you have said. Let's not jump the gun and decide where we're going to put the results of the process of the review. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Neil.
Yes, I, I see the rationale that you presented and that Counsel Shell reiterated. I guess the reason why be reflected in the new official plan was in my wording was because to alter that and go back to just one, what I would consider a very premature statutory public meeting, could be done with just a procedural amendment, which only requires a simple majority, I believe. Is, perhaps the clerks could, could speak to that?
Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Amendments to the procedural bylaw are by simple majority.
Whereas an amendment to the official plan requires a public meeting, and so that's why I believe ultimately either now or at the end of the, the, the process of looking at best practices, that this should be spelled out in the official plan if we truly support transparency and open government. For that reason, I'm going to support this, but it should happen either now or in future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Allen.
Thank you, and through you, I appreciate the, the desire of the amendment and of what Counsel Neil has said, you know, we want to ensure that we're putting our openness and enshrining it in the best possible ways. Unfortunately, as the mayor and as Counsel Shell has indicated, we don't know exactly what form that openness will be if we accept this amendment. This amendment is too broad to be prescriptive at this point. It is, so it doesn't make sense to do this at this point, because we could have other best practices come forth. I think it's fairly clear, we want to see additional public meetings for relevant developments that make sense. What, what's not clear is, are there other things that we could be doing that are best practices elsewhere? Why not wrap up those things as part of this exercise so that we're doing the best we can? And we can't enshrine gray areas in the official plan. We've already run into issues with our current official plan with some gray areas, and so we want to make sure that we're not doing that. I would, and that's why I didn't put it in my amendment or my initial motion. I also think that the rate of what transparency looks like, what communication and consultation and collaboration looks like will grow faster than official plans or any document such as that. And if we put it in there, we actually could be limiting our transparency five, 10 years down the road when it takes us a significant effort to open it up and make that change again. So we have to consider that what we're putting in makes a lot of sense, and I think we should have very clear recommendations and strategies to enshrine in the official plan. So I'm not supporting this amendment to my amendment, but I, I support why it's important, but I'm not supporting it right now.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment to the amendment? Counsel Holland.
Thank you, your worship, and I guess just to add a little bit to what Counsel Allen has said, the, this, the consultation is not necessarily to ensure that if there's something enshrined in the official plan that allows for ongoing discussion on these issues. It is, it is a higher level concern that's being expressed here, which has to do with consultation in general and engagement with the public, and I think that's something that's being well handled through our open government priority. So I would like to see that, those recommendations come forward before a process, which this amendment refers to, amendment to the amendment refers to a process, and that is not something I want to support in theory without knowing what, what will come of open government. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Patterson. I think it's, it's an important thing to discuss tonight, but I think we've got to look at the cost to staff, I think we've got to look at compliance with the Planning Act, and I also think that you can't put the cart before the horse, and I think you've got to look at it, that we should go through and do our due diligence, looking at the plan, and then decide later if we want to go to the official plan. And I also had a long chat with Commissioner Hurdle, and maybe she'd like to offer a few words on this matter. She is an expert in this, if I could ask her to take the floor for a minute.
So Commissioner Hurdle, do you have any, does staff have any opinion on, can we put that process in the new official plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. So my understanding, based on conversations that I've had now with some members of council, is there's an interest, a desire to look at increasing public input participation in the entire process, and that will include not only maybe additional public meeting, but also looking at the way that we, we change the time allotment for people to speak. So we're starting to get into a lot of details, and those details are more procedural in nature and not policy at a high level, meaning that if council decided in three years... that if council decided in three years from now, for example, to change the way that it's doing consultation, if it was in the official plan, it would require an entire official plan amendment. If it's in a procedural bylaw, it's far more easy and flexible for council to make those amendments and those changes, as we know that technology, for example, will be changing along the way. So, I think that it makes sense to look at best practices and report back to council what recommendation prior to making decisions as to how the process will unfold, and in which document it will be incorporated.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Strutt?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to need to recap this out loud to make sure I didn't get lost with the three layers. It's like a three-layer cake now. So, we have the original motion with the be resolved clause that wanted to add a public meeting for the zoning bylaw amendments and the official plan amendments. And this is, as a result, I understand from comments from multiple members of the public, speaking to multiple members of council about this kind of thing. That's the reason for the original motion, which was presented as a notice from motion previous to tonight. Then we had an amendment from councillor Allen. Coincidentally, he was working on separately, as state of accounts for Neil, which is no longer up on the screen, which says all of our consultation and public meetings, that whole strategy should undergo a review. That includes two public meetings for the purpose of that review only, and the results of which councillor McLaren is now saying should be reflected in the new official plan with this amendment. That's what that would do. And I support, as far as this amendment goes, I believe, I agree with the speakers who said that it's a little bit too restrictive and possibly tying our hands unnecessarily, seeing as we don't know the result of the public input that we're asking for. It seems to be two things that cross purposes. And if I got confused in deliberations tonight, so will the public. And for that reason, I think, although I may want this in the official plan when we're done, I'm happy to do that at that time, which I believe is what the mayor said. So, I will not support this amendment.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion to amend the amendment that has not already spoken? Councillor McLaren, you have the last word.
Thank you. So, it was argued that we may be doing this too soon, because we may be prejudicing the results. But may I point out that the actual, earlier, the amendment that was presented by councillor Allen actually already does have a result in there. And nobody seemed to have any issue with that. It does say that we're going to have public meeting at the start, and also at the finish, and finish with a public meeting. That seems to be prejudging it. So, if you've thought that that was, that putting it in the official plan was prejudging it, the suggestion might be that even coming up with two meetings might be a prejudgment of it. But I don't think so, because what we're doing is, we're actually listening to the public. The public has said they want this. And where do they want it? And the best way to express it is in the official plan. So, that doesn't seem to ring true with me. It was also mentioned that we don't want to enshrine this in the official plan. Well, perhaps enshrine is not the best word, because official plans can be changed as we go along. But the point of having it in the official plan is that this is a document that's created by the people, and that they want two meetings. I've heard this over and over again, even before this came up, that we don't have enough time to prepare, to understand what's going on at a planning meeting if there's only one public meeting. That seems to be very clear to me. And if it's not, if just by any chance, that's not considered best practices in other jurisdictions, then maybe we should exceed best practices, because best practices are not living up to the needs of the community. And that's why, in my opinion, it should be definitely be put in there. And it was also been complaining, I've been hearing complaints also, that the official plan is not specific enough. But this is trying to make it more specific. This is, again, trying to listen to the concerns of the public and do something about it. So, to say that we are doing something that's too specific, well, that's part of the problem with the official plan, and that's why it's being reviewed right now, and why there are so many calls for more specific language in this. So, it's, again, it seems that we wouldn't be listening to the public if we don't put this into the official plan. Second, or third, actually, it was argued that this might make it too hard to change. Well, part of putting things in texts and in our plans is so that we have consistency going forward, and so that people can learn and expect, and understand what they are going to expect. If it can change every single time, then you're not having a certain consistency, and the public becomes confused. You said that this was confusing. Well, the entire official plan process is a long process that requires public consultation and education. But if you're saying that we're going to change it later, well, this is the time when we're reviewing the official plan. This is the time to do it. Not later. That's the wrong time to do it. We should be doing it now, when the public is realizing that it's being changed. If we do it later, we risk alienating the public again. It was argued that this isn't open government. I submit to you that this is open government. We are dealing with what the people have wanted. We want people to actually understand the planning process. This is their city. And at this moment, we give them 20 days before a public meeting to gather all their thoughts and understanding of what's happening. And most of these people have jobs. That's not right. That puts them at a serious disadvantage. What we should be doing is giving them every opportunity, and this is an attempt to do that in a high-level document, because this is a high-level principle, open government. And lastly, it was argued that this could be working at cross purposes. If you argue that this is at cross purposes, I would submit to you that the will of the people, you're working at cross purposes to the will of the people. We want this in the official plan because it makes consistency, not cross purposes. The consistency is that people can access it at any time. Cross purposes suggests that somehow the official plan, or this amendment, is trying to work against the will and the interests of the people. I submit to you that it is in the interests of the people, and the best way to develop this city. So, for all the reasons that were given, I submit to you that you may have misunderstood the purpose of this last, therefore, or that therefore be resolved clause. We want it in the official plan because that's the safest place to ensure public participation, open government, that we are actually doing what the people want, and giving people the opportunity to voice their concerns. If we do this, and it turns out that best practices aren't to have two meetings...
Thirty seconds.
...then we are actually subverting the will of the people. So, I ask you, please, consider open government. This is open government. Please, consider that this is not at cross purposes. Please, consider that we may be wanting to exceed best practices, and that's why it should be put in the official plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote on the motion to amend the amendment. Please vote. And that loses by a vote of five to seven. On the motion to amend, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, Your Worship. If we could have that motion to amend, I don't think there's a time where staff would bring back the best practice review. Now, since it's not going to be part of the official plan, we don't have, like, a deadline of when the official plan, five-year review, was going to be, you know, heart-closed. I just wonder, through you, to staff, if they have an idea when they would be able to bring something back of the other best practices.
Do you have any input from staff on that? Commissioner Hurdle?
Through Mr. Mayor. So, my understanding is that this process doesn't only require review of best practices, but also requirement of having an initial meeting with the public, probably to discuss some of these best practices, and then a final meeting with the public to most likely review what city staff may be recommending to council in terms of changes to the consultation process. So, I don't have a specific time in mind, but, you know, we are looking, obviously, at definitely months, because we want to give proper notice to the public in terms of meetings. We don't want to rush to organize meetings and then give people a week, a week and a half. And so, we want to make sure it's properly organized. We want to make sure there's appropriate notice time given as well. So, I can say months. I don't have a specific date, but it's not something that we would be able to report back within a month, period.
Okay, thanks very much. I do support this amendment. I think it's important to get the municipal best practices, because we've always done it the same, you know, for me, going back to 2006. And I thought that's what all municipalities did. And then at the official plan meeting last week is when we were informed by another member of the public, who said that Ottawa does more than one public meeting. So, if Ottawa does it, what other cities do it? You know, I think doing that over, you know, that broad best practice across the province will be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I agree with councillor Ossanik. I keep hearing what certain people say are best practices, but I don't have that in front of me. And I am really looking forward to staff delving into it, and actually getting the charts, getting the lists, and find out what other cities in Ontario do. Because so far, it's a very, very gray area with very many opinions, but not many facts. So, I'm looking forward to getting the best practices first, so that we can then have the public consultation where we have some knowledge of what we're hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cannon?
Thank you. And through you, I guess I want to just reiterate those comments that I think everybody here supports the concept of openness and accountability and community input and all those things. But I think we need to, we need to do our homework first before we put that in writing and formalize it. Because, you know, I'm thinking of the our last meeting where somebody had said, you know, there was a height restriction in France. And I had heard that, and was like, huh, I didn't even know that was a thing. And it turns out it isn't a thing. It's just completely false. And I had to look that up, and if I had taken it at face value, that that was an actual thing, I probably would have believed it. But I think we need to look into these things and actually figure out, do people actually know what they're talking about, before we start stuffing things in to the official plan, because it's just not the right process. I think we all agree in best practices, but we need to figure out what those are in a professional way.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Yes. I just wanted to check with both the CAO and Commissioner Hurdle. My only concern, because we haven't actually got a timeline on this, I would hate for this to get lost on the priority matrix, and be two or three years down the line before this happens. Perhaps because the CAO controls that matrix, perhaps you could speak to that.
So, I'll just note that Commissioner Hurdle said months, not years. But CAO Hunt, do you have something to add?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, we understand that, you know, open government, transparency, and the work plan associated with that does include public consultation. In fact, in the next little while, as early as next meeting, there will be some interim report on public consultation, not specific to this particular topic. But we have a vision in mind for how to do consultation in that regard. So, I agree with Commissioner Hurdle. At this point in time, you know, it wouldn't be years. It would be some months, but I can't tell you exactly when. And it would end up on the matrix, and we would move it forward expeditiously, and do a thorough job of it.
That's good. I know your phone number. I know where you live, so we can hold you to that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Hudson?
Just on that note, and I know it's hard for staff to say, but would this review be done in time to be included in the official plan, if council was inclined to do so? I'm just looking for some, how those two things will dovetail together.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, our goal here is not going to be to try to rush this along, so that we can try to push it through in the official plan. Because I think what we heard from council through a vote tonight, is that council would like to see the outcomes of the best practices before they make a decision as to where that fits best. And it could be at the end of the day, that part of it is incorporated in the official plan, and part of it is in committee bylaws, because we may get into a lot of details. So, I think that, you know, we're going to have to put together a timeframe for this, but we're not going to work on the timelines of the official plan necessarily, because those things are not, we're not being directed at this point to make sure that that's incorporated in the official plan. And if council wanted to do that, at the end of the day, you know, there can always be an amendment to the official plan to include some information in the official plan. I just want to add to that, we do talk about best practices in terms of public input. But one of the things that we will include in this review as well is a cost related to any changes in terms of our processes. And I think it's important for, it will be important for council members to understand that although there are some, you know, larger developers that do go through the process and are used to it, we do have some smaller homeowners that come forward with applications. So, I think we need to understand overall, when we are going to look at best practices, not only the public input portion, but any additional costs, timeframe, and also the times that we are, we have under the Planning Act, in order to make decisions on applications as well. So, that will all be part of the review and brought back to council.
Thank you. And I appreciate the last comments of Commissioner Hurdle. I mean, I think what I heard in the previous debate on the amendment to the amendment, if I got that right, is that people didn't want to include it in the official plan, because they weren't quite sure what the implications were coming out of the review. So, but that they weren't against putting it in the official plan. They just wanted to be more certain about it. So, I think we should make some attempt on the staff's side to see if the two can be brought together. The second thing is, I too had those thoughts. I do think that public meeting need is there, and demand is there from the public, and will help clarify the whole planning process. However, I do think that we perhaps need a series, a number of tests, to determine whether a particular proposal needs to have the two meetings, or maybe we can change when the meeting takes, first meeting takes place, or something like that. But because not all proposals to planning are even controversial, right? I mean, if you think about our council meetings, sometimes they, we have six of them, and it's just bang, just rubber stamp that. We trusted those guys on planning to do it right. And rarely have I seen blowback from it personally. But so, I think the way we usually deal with this is you give staff, or staff proposes, and council adopts a test, a series of tests. And one of them might be, I will just say this now, is we just bumped up the consideration of the East Side Commercial Plaza, which was great, I think. So, maybe that's what it will take. Two councillors have to make a motion to council to say, no, no, this is too important. We've got to have two meetings. And if we work it right at the front end with staff and their information, they settle to us, or give to us and the public, perhaps that will work. So, that's just a suggestion. But I do think that the commissioner put her finger on a time and cost issue that smaller proposals probably shouldn't bear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Baum?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I'll be supporting this. I think the one caution I want to add is that just having public meetings doesn't necessarily reach all the demographics that are out there. We have very active, engaged people that would come to every meeting. But we also have a large majority of the population that, for some reason, cannot engage that way. So, my caution here is, we have to go beyond simply holding a meeting to reach the majority of people, and understand what their desires and their goals for the city are, lest we actually strive towards a vision that represents a minority of people's views, who happen to be very actively engaged. That's the caution here that I would like to add. So, I would really hope that staff, in bringing this back, would have a very open-minded policy recommendation to ensure that we reach the greatest amount of people possible, which I know is always a challenge, and we're always working on engagement, and staff does a great job at that. But we have to make sure that we expand beyond just those people that can attend a meeting, because there's lots of people, as councillor Holland has mentioned previously, that for whatever reasons, whether it's children, or work schedules, whatever, simply can't make that public meeting. So, we have to be... ensuring to be inclusive with this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen, you have the last word on your amendment.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the discussion tonight about this. And I'm sure Counselor Neal does as well, because we were both thinking about this in response to what we've been hearing. And I think that having a review and starting it with a public meeting will help guide staff in some of the best practices that they're seeking to solve the problems that they're hearing at that initial consultation meeting. And then we'll be able to develop a strategy and present that to the public, get their responses, and, you know, and if there's anything that needs to be slightly tweaked before brought to council for adoption, that can happen. And I think that that's why we've been trying that process in here. We want to have the evidence from the best practices, from things that have worked. And even when we're looking at best practices, they're probably not perfect practices. We're probably trying to make something better and incrementally better. And as we learn more, we'll have to adapt whatever we implement now. But we know that what our approach to development applications, the planning process from the community side, could use improvement. And that's what the goal of this is. That's what the goal of this exercise is. And I agree 100% with Counselor Hutchinson that we have to be careful about what we're asking for here. I know that when I was looking at some other communities in terms of the differences, there are thresholds of impact or level or certain types of applications for amendments that get picked in those municipalities. And staff will find those best practices and bring those forward for us. So I'm looking forward to moving forward, to advancing open government as part of this motion, and advancing our ability for our community to have a conversation and ability and input on what each, what development looks like and how we grow our city. And I'm looking forward to the future conversations around that. So please support this amendment to the original motion.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion to amend. Please vote now. And that carries. On the motion as amended, call Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. I too appreciated what Counselor Hutchinson said. My intent in the original motion wasn't that somebody who has, and we see this a lot at planning, who's purchased a property to discover they have an illegal secondary suite, and they're trying to bring it into compliance through the zoning process. Something like that, I don't think needs necessarily two complete public meetings and other reasonably sized ones. I like the idea that this could follow the model of allowing for councillors to bump up the process. It also would allow staff to use a logic that, such as, is it something I said? That a logic such as, you know, clearly, we, if it's a major development, if we're talking about 20 stories, if we're talking about an OP review, an OP amendment, a major zoning amendment, I think our staff would know well enough that that automatically requires, the complexity of that would require two public meetings, which I would support. But whatever comes back, establishing thresholds, allowing council to bump up, allowing staff to do a logical bump up, that would ensure that second public meeting, I think, is a sensible thing. The commissioner did mention looking at potentially reducing the amount of time that the public have for input. She's shaking her head. I guess I miss. Could you repeat what you said about timing? Because I thought you were suggesting that.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was indicating the allotment of time, which means in, depending on where you look in other municipalities, there are different timeframes. Some have five minutes, some have 10 minutes. So there are different times allotments. So one of the things that, you know, we would look into and report back to council in terms of best practices would be the amount of time, which could mean more time in some cases. I don't know. But I'm just saying that that's how detailed the review will be. And I must have said something. That's how detailed the review of best practices will be. And those kinds of things would usually find their way into committee bylaws or procedural bylaws.
Because I do know the Planning Act talks about a reasonable time allocation, and that may be defined as five or 10 minutes, depending on the municipality. But I would, I don't think reasonable would be any less than the time, five minutes that we now allow the public individually to speak to an issue. But I supported this amendment because I think it gives the public an opportunity to, and it gives staff an opportunity for us to get this right. And seeing what thresholds other communities use, seeing what, what, how a bump up might work. I know Ottawa has a form of a bump up for public meetings. So that seems sensible. Again, I'm looking forward to this being incorporated, hopefully this year or very early in 2017, because I think, I think we've heard a clear message at the public meetings for the official plan, that our community overwhelmingly wants that additional public input. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion as amended. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Holland at the minute. So City Council Meeting Number 2016-7, held Wednesday, February 17, 2016, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications items. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for bylaws.
I will note that bylaw number five now refers to the amended bylaw that's related to Report 33. And it's moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Cannon. That bylaws one through six and nine through 11 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Cannon. That clause 11.34, bylaw number 2010-1, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws three through six three readings.
Please vote. Still one person left to vote. Can everyone vote again, just to make sure? That carries.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Cannon. That bylaws three through 11 be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. I have a motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Bum. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.